I don't know, you should have one, I told them to get one.
Sherilyn, do you want me to read this proclamation? Do you want to read this proclamation?
Feel free to read it.
You're free to read it. It will be my third one today, I'm free to read.
It went down the line.
But no, not really. She says the proclamation, so that was a...
You've got such a beautiful...
Yeah, Sherilyn, I get it. Okay.
One foot, need to figure it out. Oh, you're on.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, April the 28th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sherilyn, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon...
Yes.
Martin...
Here.
Polica...
Here.
Piana...
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Actually, I think, um, I know, right? There was an agenda, there was a, because I know that Julie is here and we're going to discuss pride, so I'd like to pull item E from the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I thought we did that at consent.
We could, but...
Right, we're good.
Yeah, so pull item E if you don't mind.
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented with amendments.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Sherilyn, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon...
Yes.
Martin...
Yes.
Polica...
Yes.
Piana...
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. Moving on, we have three presentations this evening. The first one is the observation of Wednesday, May 15th, 2014, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 11th, 2014, as National Police Week. And Chief Collins, as you come up, let me just read a little bit about this if you don't mind. The Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that all members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and protecting and property and by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. I ask council to call upon all citizens of Ferndale and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe Wednesday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, on Tuesday, May 13th, at 11:00 a.m. in front of the Ferndale Police Station, we will be conducting our annual police memorial ceremony. We'll have the third grade class from Roosevelt Primary School to lead us in the pledge, and we will have the police honor guard there to fire salute for the officers that have lost their lives this past year in the line of duty. And we would like to invite the public as well as council to attend that event on Tuesday morning.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. The next presentation is actually a resolution recognizing Municipal Clerks Week, and we happen to have an outstanding clerk in our employ, I'm happy to say, Sherilyn, so let me just brag on the clerks for a moment, if I may. This proclamation that I'd like us to adopt reads as follows: "The office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link among the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. It is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, and so therefore, the city of Ferndale, mayor, and city council do recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2014, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our heartfelt appreciation to Municipal Clerk Sherilyn Brown, our deputy clerk, Marty McGrath, and to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent."
Thank you.
May I have a unanimous consent?
Support.
Support. All right. Adopted unanimously. Sherilyn, a long way of saying thank you for all you do to serve the community, to serve the council, and to serve our residents. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure, thanks, Mayor.
Our third and final presentation this evening is the Downtown Development Authority. Chris Hughes is here with us this evening. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, council, everyone else. We've got a lot going on at the DDA in downtown Ferndale, so I will do it as quickly as possible. First of all, the biggest thing that we've got happening in the office and all around us is the welcoming reception for the National Main Street Conference that's coming to Detroit on May 17th through the 21st. For the first time ever, they're going to have a welcoming reception, we're going to have it in downtown Ferndale. We were picked because we're cool. And we've called it "The Gig," which is getting gear for the Works in Progress Conference. It's an awesome event. We have gotten more than 50 of our businesses agreed to get on board and provide special treats or services or discounts to our guests that are coming from out of town. We're going to have more than 500 people here that are coming from across the nation. They are all downtowners who love Main Street like we all do and love downtowns like we all do, so it's kind of fun to get everybody in the same town together at the same time. So we are still needing ambassadors, and we need a hand, an extra hand, so if anybody would like to volunteer, I was told to bring props, so this is the best thing I could find. So if anybody would like to volunteer, they can contact Cindy Wilcock at the DDA at 248-546-1632. The gig will be on May 17th at the Rust Belt Market. Next, and that's in two days, we have Ferndale coming up. It's our B-to-B networking opportunity that the Business Development Committee of the DDA organizes monthly. This month, we are proud to be able to announce a bit of a partnership that we're creating with Michigan Works, with Heather Coleman-Boss will be there to talk about the resources, and we're going to kind of wage a hire local campaign. We've had Shop Local and Made Local, well now we want people to hire local, and so we are going to focus on that. She's going to share the development, the resources of the Michigan Works program and also teach people a little bit more about Forest Square. So that's 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, April 30th, at Blooms by JR Design on East Nine Mile. There's free coffee and donut holes. This Saturday is going to be kind of a crazy day in town. It's a great day to come to town. We've called it Downtown Ferndale Mania, May 3rd. It's because there's so much happening that day, we couldn't fit it all into one thing, so we squished it in together and turned it into a crazy day. So it starts with Free Comic Book Day at Detroit Comic Books. That starts at 10:00 a.m., they open, and they'll be giving away free comic books as well as, and that's a worldwide event that happens, which is pretty kind of cool. They'll have artists there drawing from noon until 3:00, so that's going to be a lot of fun. Family Fundale from 1:00 to 5:00 is in downtown. It showcases 12 downtown businesses and what there is to do with your kids, and there's plenty to do. And Sherry Wells, a volunteer, has organized that, and we're happy to promote it for her. A food truck rally starts at 3:00 o'clock at Rust Belt Market. That's going to be lots of good stuff to eat. Olla la lucha, lucha wrestling and burlesque in the Old Elegant Space. Doors open at 7:00, things happen at 8:00. I don't know what that is, but it sounds pretty cool to me. And the Metro Times blowout is at various locations all around town that day. So it's going to be a busy day in downtown Ferndale. We encourage staff to park at the American Legion lot, so that leaves room for our guests, but we can only encourage that. Thursdays are ramping up. May 15th will be Bike Night, featuring bike checks by the Downtown Ferndale Bike Shop and hopefully bike licensing by the Police Auxiliary and education on how to use a road share, which we now have going down West Nine Mile. So that's an important thing that we want to teach people, and we'll have a short ride around town. And finally, and probably maybe most importantly, we've got lots of new businesses that opened up. Jimmy Johnson New Shops of Ferndale is open, Treasure Trove, The Final Space, and The Dollar Castle, which we are not going to call The Dollar Castle anymore. That's now open. Pizza Hut is closed. Twister Tavern, formerly known as Boogie Fever, is closing in. Secreto, the cigar bar, is looking awesome. We did a tour of there the other day. It might take up cigars.
Do they have an opening date by any chance?
They don't.
Okay.
They're close.
Thank you.
Close as could be anywhere from tomorrow till whenever. And finally, at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting the grand opening of Nature's Playhouse, and that is going to be a really neat place where kids can go and parents can take their kids, and there's classes, and it's very organic and down-to-earth. So that's what's happening. More details at downtownferndale.com. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but volunteer for the gig and come downtown.
Hey, anyone have questions of Chris?
I'll give myself a pat on the back and a hand.
Very good. All right. Our next item of business then, we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing would be the fiscal year-end 2015 and 2016 budget and consideration to adopt. And April, do you want to introduce that item?
I absolutely will. Good evening, Mayor and council. As you know, over the course of the last month, council has been working toward balancing our budget for the next two fiscal years. However, staff has been actually working on that since January. Both Karen and I will tag team a little bit on this presentation, and we'll go from there, and you can stop at any time if you have any questions. So I always like to start with what is exactly happening, because I find most people tune me out, they just want to know the details first. So I'm going to start with the details and work backwards. So as discussed last year, we had already looked at moving the millage rate up to the maximum of 5.4552 for fiscal year 2015. We will also be recommending that again for 2016. However, on the flip side of that, our general obligation bonds were scheduled to be at 7.984 mils, and because they're nearing the end of life, the payments get a little smaller, and with the slight increase in taxable value that we did have, we were able to actually lower the GOT bonds to 6.7 mils for fiscal year 2015 and 6.5 respectively for 2016, which actually means when you add them up, we're lowering taxes just a little bit, but they're actually not going to go higher with that increase in the millage. And we'll talk more about that as we go through the presentation. Sanitation fund was originally scheduled for a $16 increase when we approved the budget last year for fiscal year 2015. But in working with Karen in the Finance Department, we looked at where we were and where our fund balance was, which was small, but enough to actually not have to raise the rates to the full 16. We just did $10 for fiscal year 2015 and $10 for fiscal year 2016. Again, as we go through the budget process, we'll be talking a little bit more about that. And as you know, back in February, we had already agreed to lower the water and sewer rates by 10%. So generally, overall, we're hoping that our residency actually a little less money coming to the city this next fiscal, the next two fiscal years, and we'll talk about that in the next few slides. So with that, I want to bring Karen up to the podium. She's going to go over, I know a lot of, sorry, it's hard to read, but a lot of people want to know just what is the bottom line on our tax bill. Now, she's going to talk just a little bit about the city's taxes and recognizing that on our tax, but we also have other levies that are not, are beyond our control, but she's going to talk specifically just about the cities.
So what this table demonstrates is, on the left-hand side, the property values is your taxable value. So just kind of a rule of thumb, it's generally your house, what you think is going to sell for is usually two times that. So this is what your taxable value is that you will see on your tax bill, and then going across towards the right, you'll see the different changes. So there's then, or there's going to be two changes to your tax bill for city millages. You will see a difference in your voted operating levy, as April stated. We're going up to the full, I think it was the 14.552. So you'll see the difference coming in here, and to going over towards the right even more, you'll see a decrease in your debt service levy. So again, let me restate that. You're having an increase in your voted operating levy, but you're having a greater decrease in your debt service levy. So, and then all the way across your total, April, if you go to the blue part, right? Yep. You'll see your overall decrease in your tax bill for city millages. So going back to the left, you see the 5,100 and 150 and 200 is your taxable value. We just picked some general numbers, and then you'll see demonstrated there your decrease in your tax bill.
So for those out of a $50,000 taxable value, it'll be $5 less. And for those, somebody who's 200,000 taxable value, their tax bill for the city service portion will be about $20 less a year.
So I think the overall point you want to see with this table is the fact that your taxes are going to be going down, however, we're offering the same level of service.
So again, I like to just put it out there, so now we can talk a little bit about how we got to these numbers, and we'll go from there. One of the things that, as we were looking and looking at this budget process, is trying to figure out, how is it possible after almost five years of a millage increase, are we still struggling financially? And I meant, this is going to be the start of the conversation. So when you take a look at what our budget was in 2010, we were operating on our general operating millage of 14.5448. In 2015, we've estimated going all the way up to the full 20, which is a difference of an increase of taxable value, or tax rate of 5.4552. However, in 2010, at 14.5, we had 18.5 in million in revenue, and in 2015, we have 18.2, which is $300,000 less than what we had. So even with the tax increase, our revenue has decreased by $300,000. Our expenditures in 2010 were 19 million and .2, and almost exactly $1 million in expenditures or less in 2015. So while our tax rates have increased, overall revenues have decreased, and general fund has reduced expenditures by over $1 million. So just goes to show how the taxable value absolutely impacted our budget process. And unfortunately, even as our taxable value rate rises with the HEV and the cap that we had in proposal A, we're never going to realize that saving. We're never going to, the revenue will go up at a much, much slower pace than somebody sees their taxable value increase. So that's going to be the struggle that the city of Ferndale and most other core communities throughout Michigan are going to be facing over the next few years. As a housing market starts to rise, we're not going to be able to see the fruits of that labor, and we're going to continually struggle, and we'll talk about that in just a second. One of the things I wanted to talk a little bit about this year is that staff worked very, very hard at trying to make some significant budget changes that would make it easier for the general population to read and understand. We still have a long way to go, but we've tried to get rid of a lot of the financial mumbo jumbo, if you will. Governmental financial accounting is difficult for even the well-versed practitioner, let alone the general public, and we really want to try to create a more transparent and understandable budget. In the meantime, as well, we want to be able to prepare this budget for priority-based budgeting, so that if we do get to that point again where we have to make another round of significant cuts or revenue, we have more revenue issues that we have to start prioritizing, that we have the data to support that, and have a budget, again, that we can help the general public understand. And we also wanted to create a budget that was built on best practices. So we really did a lot of adjustments this year to try to start that process again. It's about a $50 million budget, so we can only do so much in one year, but I think that we made some significant headway. I think the three things that the general population, our residents and council and our department has will notice this year is that we reclassified a lot of line items, so that you could look at that line item and go, okay, that's what that is. We tried to rename them to actually what they were and not some kind of weird, where you could see some line items, for instance, in the sidewalk program, used to be called code enforcement. It was just really a sidewalk program. So we renamed it Sidewalk Program to, again, to understand. Parks, all that kind of stuff, we really tried to make some definite changes to line items. We also added a lot of additional line items, again, to help more with the detail. For instance, a lot of people wondered, what does fringes mean? Well, we actually took fringes, and it's about 15 different line items, and we actually listed them out one by one, so that anybody who could look at the budget could know that, okay, this is healthcare, this is dental, this is social security, all of that kind of information, to again, help the population understand, what does that exactly mean? Trying to be as transparent as possible. And then we eliminated a few internal service funds, which what that means is, it was just another place to look. So we moved the internal service funds into the general fund. So again, there's fewer places to have to turn to to find out exactly where the money is going. So now, some of those internal service funds might have been at the end of the budget, have been put into the general fund. So again, the general residents can take a look and go, okay, that's what that means. So there were small changes, and they might not seem very significant, but we feel that we're trying to pave the way again to help it be more understandable for anybody who is interested and wants to know more about the budget. Are there any questions so far? So now, we can get to the meat of the budget process and where it is that we started. As I had talked about before, staff actually starts the budget process in January. We start to take a look at where our departments have been and trending, and we start to make recommendations to the Finance Department to start preparing the budget. How we do that typically is with an understanding, using goal setting that council has established prior to that, making sure that those goals are met within the budget process, as well as ensuring that whatever service levels that are part of the goal setting are met as well. So council, all of staff brings that to us in January and February, and that's when we sit down with all each department head as a team with finance, and we start to go over and question and figure out where that all fits, and come back to council with where the budget is, and we start making changes from there. So some notable items for this particular budget are as follows. As we had talked about last year in 2014, the SAFER grant that we had had for three years had expired in 2013. However, council had requested and allowed us to extend that, extend those four positions for one more year, but we explored a fire authority with Hazel Park. As you know, early spring, it was decided that the fire authority was not going to work at this time for Hazel Park. So we had to put that, we had to pull that off the table, and we needed to move forward. So without the fire authority in sight, the funding for the SAFER grants is no longer, for the SAFER positions are no longer there. So that will expire in June 30th, 2014, and those positions will be eliminated. No other service reductions were proposed with this particular budget. Do note that, and we'll talk about that in just a second, that major streets fund balance will be depleted in 2016, and as we had talked about back in February, another major change was that water and sewer rates will decrease by 10%. So when we provided all this information and brought it back to council with all of these significant, what we call notable items, we came up with this deficit. So with council, had started this process on Saturday, March 29th, we spent most of the day here, going over all of the departmental requests and taking a look at how we're going to begin to balance. Basically, about a $1.2 million deficit, and unfortunately, that $1.2 million deficit is with the full HEV, and will continue and remain pretty much the deficit for a while, especially as we try to, you know, as revenues try to catch up with inflation and things of that nature. So we needed to get very creative in how we could balance that budget and how we can balance that moving forward, and I see in fiscal year 2017 and beyond being even more challenging. So the significant adjustments that we made are four particular items. Reduction of OPEB payment, which I'll talk about more in just a second. Grants and private funding for park projects, financing or delaying motor pool purchases, and maintaining the building fee to pay for facilities maintenance. So let's start with the OPEB, whoops, with the OPEB contribution. For the general public and our residents, there are multiple parts to what we call and refer to as legacy costs. There's your pension, and then there's retiree healthcare. So the pension is a separate, is a separate funding, is a separate issue than OPEB, and the pension is being funded at the full amount that is designed by our actuaries. OPEB is called Other Post-Employment Benefits. So there are two parts, again, government's very complicated, so I'm trying to not make it as complicated, but there are two forms of retiree healthcare that need to be paid. Those that are already retired, and we pay those, we pay the Blue Cross but Shield bills as they come in, and then there's the future payments for those costs that have not been incurred yet. That is called, again, the Other Post-Employment Benefits. So an actuary gives us a report and says that the city is liable for about $3 million in legacy costs. About $2 million of that are what we pay on a yearly basis for retiree healthcare, and a little over a million of that is the OPEB that we like to put in the trust when we can. So what we're going to do is reduce the amount of the OPEB payment. So pensions are funded as they should be and are secure, and we're actually getting close to being 100% funded in police and fire, we're hoping, over the course of the next few years, that will continue to be there. But the OPEB part of that is a voluntary contribution. So we pay as we go, and then we try to pay toward the future. And unfortunately, with the budget the way it is, it's just not possible to keep putting as much in the trust as we have. But what we are trying to focus on as we balance the budget is trying to hit a mark of between 25 and 50% of that payment. And obviously, as our, if our financial situation changes, I would absolutely recommend we continue to fund at 100%. However, do note that, just so, again, our residents understand, the majority of communities in Michigan can't afford to pay any of the OPEB payments, so we're not alone in that matter either. So we do try to pay as much as we can, but we had to lower that significantly to balance the budget this year. Again, we added quite a few parks projects as well to these next two-year budget cycles, and one of the goals of the Wurin Parks Committee was to try to seek grants and private funding for those. So we actually made sure that we put in the budget revenue sources for, I know that the Recreation Department and the DPW Department wrote for significant grants for the fiscal year 2016, and we're going to be looking at seeking private funding for the park improvement that we want to make for 2015. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that, so that we can keep that process moving along with parks. The other item that we decided to look at were the larger purchases in motor pool. We need a new plow truck and an aerial, both of them are significant amounts of money. So what we'll do there is finance those. It'll be, help our cash flow, and those larger vehicles have a life of between 25 and 30 years, so it just makes sense at that point to do it on a large purchase like that. And then, as you know, we have quite a few buildings within the city of Ferndale that are government-owned, a lot of our facilities that we have. And one of the things that we want to do as the police and court renovations start to close up, we want to maintain that building fee that is on the ticket to maintain our, to maintain a capital, to maintain capital for other facility improvements. And unfortunately, when buildings have issues, they're never small, they're either rust or HVAC systems or things of that nature that are really expensive, and if we can continue to find another mechanism that's not tax dollars to help maintain our buildings, that will take the strain off the general fund. So we're hoping to keep that moving forward. So that is how we were able to balance that $1.2 million for both years. Out of general fund, moving into streets, this is another significant area of concern. The four projects that we do have for this year is the East Nine Mile Project, Hilton from Eight Mile to Nine Mile, Woodward Heights, and then Woodward Heights to Ten Mile, and the Laverne Road Project, which was just a carryover. Most of those funds were expended in 2014. So those are the three, the four, the three streets that we have for this particular next two years. However, what is concerning about that is that we have depleted that fund balance. There is no more fund balance, there's no more contribution from the general fund to the roads, and as our road bonds prepare to expire, failure to have the voter, our residents approve another millage, the general fund will be responsible for contributing and making sure that our roads remain stable, because the amount of funding that we get from the state is very, very little, does not cover even the basics of the pavings that we need to do. So that is very concerning, and in 2016, that we will have nothing left in the fund balance as we move forward, and it's important to this community, as we know, trying to be as walkable as we can, and that also includes, you know, ADA ramps and things of that nature. So, and a lot of, you know, bike lanes and things of that nature aren't even included in that, that's just straight paving. So it is very concerning. However, we were able to get these projects done for 2016, and above and beyond that, we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out. So when it comes down to it, with those two, general fund and the major streets, we're getting close to the point where the stress of the finances is, in the future, it's not over, unfortunately. And I know that we all hope that it would be as our economy strengthened. And I know that we all hope that it would be as our economy strengthened, but unfortunately, the way that city's taxing structure is just not there yet. Sanitation, even with sanitation a little bit, we went into fund balance to help offset some of the costs. And as we looked, I know that, you know, this new staff at DPW really took a look at all of our funds to make sure that we had the right people charged, and just making sure, and we shored up our budgets. Unfortunately, we had increased sanitation by $10 a year, and the only option we would actually have in lowering sanitation rates would be reduced services. So that would be the next step if we ever wanted to go there. I don't think we're prepared to do that yet, but as we move forward, that would have to be a conversation, because we've depleted that fund balance now as well. Again, as water and sewer, I don't think I need to go into too much detail. As we talked about, and council approved on February 10th of 2014, we will be lowering the water rates by 10%, and we continue to do that. We also are looking at a modeling program that will take a look at, for moving forward in the future, to make sure that, that our rates match the actual needs, and making sure that we remain at a healthy balance of funding our capital projects, but not having too much in the fund balance if we don't need it. So what's nice about this, again, is the reminder that we're able to pay for our capital projects out of water and sewer, which allow us not to have to, as part of the vote, the current millage, we have the GOT bonds that we have right now for the roads, also had included water at that time. So we're hoping that when we take a look at our road needs, that we can lower the request that we would need. So that brings us right back to where we started. So in general, the outlook is not great, it's not awful, but it's not as great as we wanted, but overall, our residents should see less, basically less checks being written to the city of Ferndale this year. Are there any questions?
All right. This is actually a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing portion of this, and I'm going to invite anyone from the public that would like to address council on the fiscal year 2015 and 2016 budget to approach council, give us your name, and make any comments or questions that you might have about our budget.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Patrick Sheen, Ferndale Fire Union President. Wasn't hoping to come up first, but now I'm here. Again, appreciate everything you guys do, I understand all the decisions you have to make, I have great respect for serving your community. So don't hold it against me when I give you what I got to say.
We have, we have respect for your service as well, believe me.
Because I pay attention to stuff like this, and I watch all your State of the Union presentations, Mayor, and, you know, from day one, you've talked about how our city's doing better than most, and we're progressive, and we're doing far better than everyone around us, and I've always been encouraged by that. This last one in March, you, you know, you got a whole lot of stuff here, I'm obviously going to highlight the areas that you spoke regarding the fire department.
Glad somebody pays attention to that stuff, thank you.
You know, you talked and basically stated that our fire chief, Kevin Sullivan, also had a busy year as he explored a potential partnership with the city of Hazel Park for a fire authority that we hoped could reduce costs and protect our fire services. Unfortunately, those talks have not led to an agreement, so it's back to the drawing board for how, for how to maintain our understanding or outstanding fire department. Whatever we end up deciding, however, I want the residents to know, as well as our fire service customers, Royal Oak and Pleasant Ridge, that we will not compromise our mission to provide a full-service fire department along with a quick response time we're known for. And that's, again, that's great, it's awesome, I love it, it's a great mission. But again, I, a mission's only a wish unless you actually put your money where your mouth is, or the citizens' money where your mouth is. As far as why the talks broke down, I don't, I don't know why the fire talks, authority talks broke down. At the beginning of the whole SEMCOG journey, that Mrs. Piana was involved in getting it rolling, you know, the deal was that all three sides were going to be involved, the fire unions, the chiefs, and the city managers. We were involved very briefly the first couple meetings, and then after that, we have not been asked to partake in any discussions. So, you know, as far as why things broke down, I have no idea. I have no idea if there was something that could have been solved on our end, I don't know why they broke down. We were never actually given the final study, we, you know, there was, as everyone knows, there was an initial study that was made, and it was actually fairly encouraging. The only problem was there was about 1,700, I think, to 2,000 runs that were missing on Hazel Parks, and so they had to redo the study. So, you know, we were very anxious, as you may imagine, to find out what the next study said the numbers and staffing levels should be. I asked for that and never received it. I had since was no longer the president at the time, but I did ask for it and was told that they weren't, we weren't, the city wasn't ready to give it out. So I, we don't know what happened. Again, your mission sounds, sounds great, or the city's vision and mission, but then as I go through, you know, online and look through things such as, forgive me if I don't pronounce the right, Munitrex, municipality metrics system, and you talk to the state and other, I think SEMCOG and other communities regarding, you know, where we're at in our, in this particular issue with shared services. And, you know, in there, again, our mission is that we want to continue to provide a good level of service and a quick response. And in this particular study that I'm reading, it basically shows that results of the study over the past five years, each municipality has already reduced the size of their staffing levels of their respective fire services. The continuing trend of staffing reductions through attrition offsets any potential cost reductions benefits that each participating municipality would have witnessed. In light of that information, each municipality has decided and elected not to pursue any development or functional authority. So, you know, at the beginning of this authority talks, when this all started, Ray Riggs was here, he was a facilitator for SEMCOG, and he flat out told everybody that if you're looking to do this to reduce your staffing, both sides were already understaffed. And it was all about building a better mousetrap, and that's what we were told, that's why we got involved in it, and that's why we started the process. It was never supposed to be about anything else, and, you know, so this does not sound like the mission that you were telling the citizens. You know, and other things that I've looked into, you know, you guys, I handed you all...
And we'll give you five minutes, but you've got about two more left, Patrick, to just...
And then, can I come back out?
Try to, try to get it in the five minutes.
Well, you quote, you quote 1710, and you state, I'm very impressed with the fact you guys were addressing 1710 NFPA standard. Problem is, again, you're sending this information out to the state and SEMCOG saying that we comply with 1710 95% of the time, and that is flat out incorrect. We do not do that. We go to six men per day, we definitely are never going to follow it. I would say that we comply with 1710 on our responses closer to 0% of the time than 95% of the time. So, you know, NFPA 17 has an actual breakdown of how many men it takes to fight, sorry, how many people it takes to fight a two-story house fire without a basement, and the number is 14 people, okay, on any fire ground within eight minutes. We're nowhere near that. Regardless of any auto aid agreements, any mutual aid packs we have, we are nowhere near that, ever. I mean, it's very uncommon, but I would say we more go towards zero than 95%. You know, I'm curious as to why the, you know, the SAFER grant was denied, I don't know why that was ultimately denied, I would love to know why that was denied. My next question would be is why are we not, are we going to apply again for a SAFER grant? I do know that SAFER grants are now being denied more often because of the fact that if you are not complying with 1710, the staffing requirements, they're saying you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. So, you know, I would, I'd like to know if we're going to further pursue that. As far as 1710, you know, they do highlight in their sprinklers, and that helps offset, you know, some of the timelines and whatnot, but the bottom line is, you know, we've done a few sprinkler demonstrations, the chief and the fire marshal, they've gotten a lot of hype on YouTube. The bottom line is, the magic number is three to five minutes, which is what 1710 also says, you got to get the right amount of guys there in three to five minutes. The sprinklers also help things in three to five minutes to help curb a fire. Problem is, your city does not have sprinklers, we are your sprinklers. The firefighters are your sprinklers, so we get there in three to five minutes. You know, two in, two out is the next issue that we have, that's a law in Michigan, it's an OSHA law, we're supposed to comply with that. If we go from seven to six, that's going to greatly impact our ability to actually make an interior attack on a, on any type of a fire. You know, the reasons being for that are, you know, we often have a lot of medical runs, a lot of times we have two medical runs going simultaneously, that's four guys gone. If we have six in our city, we're down to two guys, we can't even comply with OSHA, two in, two out. So basically, it's going to come to a point of where we're going to basically be spraying water in a window. And I don't know if that, again, is following with your mission, that we're going to have a adequately staffed, effective fire department. You know, it's...
I need you to wrap it up, Patrick.
Okay. The bottom line is, the guys at your, these positions, these are men, their names are Joe Helmick and Jake Lasson, and they've actually been in our city for close to 10 years, they've been through all these processes, they have lives, you know, so at least acknowledge their names. You know, we're, we're trying to do anything we can to help, we've made concessions in the last couple of years, the last two contracts, we've, we've made significant concessions that were, two contracts ago, where we were told that they were monumental, they were big moments, they were great days. We did those in order to facilitate you hiring people. The headley override, the citizens voted for it based on predominantly staffing, those were your words. That's why we finally, at the end witching hour endorsed it, was because you said that it was going to be used predominantly for public safety staffing. I don't necessarily think if that's been the case.
Thank you.
Last, last thing and not least, I guess, you know, during the budget hearings, I was part of those, and it was, it was good, it was nice to be part of it. You know, at some point during that, you know, there was a lot of east side, west side joking, there was some political jocularity between Mr. Pollock and you regarding roundabouts on Hilton Road. I get all that, it's all part of the game, and it's all life and everything. Mr. Pollock, you're saying that, you know, the east side always gets shunned, they don't get what's, the same side as the west side. It is funny, but the reality is, in this case, rest assured, anybody east of the railroad tracks is going to have four guys in the fire station. The west side, where I live on Flowerdale, the contracted people that we provide a service for, Pleasant Ridge, Royal Oak Township, anybody east, west of the tracks, they're going to have two guys, two men, because that's what we have right now. In other worlds, it would be two people, man and woman, but in our case, we got two men going to be over there. So that's what you got, so just ease yourself and understand that you got the better end of the fire protection. Okay, the west side is not getting a good deal. I live on the west side on Flowerdale.
Patrick, there is a time limit, honestly.
I understand, I understand.
You have to wrap it up, thanks.
This is a pretty big deal. And I live on Flowerdale, my wife's got a business in Pleasant Ridge, I got a sister in Pleasant Ridge, and I'm telling you right now, if you guys had this set up this way, and I had a fire in my house, and our fire department showed up with two guys and told me to stand back so they could spray water in the window, I guess a compliment to Mr. Collins, our fire chief, or fire police chief, would be, you should give them more police officers, because it's going to take a lot of people to hold me back if you're going to tell me you've got control of the situation and you spray water in a window.
Thanks.
Please, I hope you reconsider this. May 5th is an artificial deadline, it's a deadline you wish for, it's not the date line or the timeline that you have to follow. I think there should be some more time that we should talk about this, and you should let the citizens be informed. Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If I may, I have some copies of a newspaper article I'd like to hand out to all the council members, the clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager, if I may. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Brown.
My name is Craig Covey, I live at 276 West Breckenridge. I talked to several of the council members about this issue, but really never got any information back, so I want to ask about a couple of budget items that deal with the city of Ferndale paying for two full-time police officers who work not in so much in Ferndale, but are based in Pontiac and in Detroit, working for NET, which is the Narcotics Enforcement Team, under Sheriff Bouchard, and a full-time officer based in Detroit with the federal DEA. The article I'm handing out is about a young man who lives in Ferndale named Earl Carruthers, he's a business owner as well. And he was arrested along with five other people a year and a half ago by the NET officers, which is the Narcotics Enforcement. The cases were all dismissed by an Oakland County judge, the charges against the Ferndale Medical Marijuana Patient charged with possession and delivery were dropped. Earl Carruthers is 28 years old, and five other people, including his brother, faced six counts after Oakland County's narcotics law enforcement team raided the Southfield Base dispensary. Again, the judge threw out all of the cases in Oakland County Circuit Court. Carruthers said that the arrest changed his life, he ended up losing a financial business, and he tried just to keep his head above water. The undercover officer, again, who works for Sheriff Bouchard, part of the NET program, which I understand Ferndale is continuing to pay, help pay for, the undercover officer went to the dispensary as a patient. The attorney said that the police officer used forged physician's certification, a fake driver's license, a fake cashed check from the state of Michigan showing that he had a medical marijuana card, and an application paperwork saying that he had a valid card. According to the attorney, it was a central point in the defense that it was entrapment. Entrapment is a sense when a government action actually creates the crime. The only thing arguably that made this not legal, the entire situation, was that the police officer broke the law. He presented fictitious fake documentation to the dispensary. The crime was created by the government, and that is the principle of entrapment. "The narcotics team," according to Mr. Carruthers, "took our cars, trashed our houses, they went to our parents' home and put guns to my mom's head," said Carruthers. Carruthers, who said he changed his mind about medical marijuana after learning about the benefits, said that other patients and caregivers in Oakland County have been harassed. He said, "You can't step on the voters' opinion, you have to respect patients and caregivers." So, council, I respectfully bring this issue up because I want to ask, after four times, when the voters of Ferndale have overwhelmingly voted to decriminalize marijuana, to legalize marijuana, to make medical marijuana legal in our state, why is the city of Ferndale spending our taxpayer dollars supporting Sheriff Bouchard's NET program, knowing that he's continuing the war on marijuana? Why are we paying for a full-time DEA officer, part of the federal government, based in Detroit, when our own residents don't want these kinds of laws enforced? I understand they do other kinds of work, I understand there's other sorts of drugs that are dangerous out there, I led the battle against meth, we've lost people to heroin, but again, I ask, why are we supporting these officers? Little Ferndale, four square miles, 19,000 people, why are we paying for the war on drugs when all the other cities around us are not necessarily part of this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address council on the 2015 and 2016 budget? budget? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of the budget, and I will now open it up to Council, uh, for your comments and questions and thoughts.
I do have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
First one is, um, maybe through the chair, do you know the parameters of applying for another SAFER grant? Are there restrictions on that? Can you do two?
Can you do two? You mean, can you do it again?
Can you, we do it again?
I believe so.
Can we, Chief?
I believe we applied again, and, um, they weren't extending awards to, uh, cities that already received one, and so that was a federal policy of the SAFER grant program.
That is correct.
So, we did apply, but we were rejected because we already got one. I'd also, um, like to make a statement that the fire authority talks did not break down. Hazel Park chose not to participate, and they ended their partnership in exploring this service-delivery model, um, with the city of Ferndale.
Um, my other comment is, is about the two officers that are, uh, assigned to other units. Um, although they do work at Ferndale, they do other things, and I'm sure Chief Collins can attest to this, and Chief, if you wanna come up here, um, I got a couple of quick questions for you. Um, but they're, they're taking guns off the street, they're taking other drugs off the street, they're running into other crimes happening in progress, so it's just not, they're just not going after medical marijuana issues. Um, our drug forfeiture fund is pretty well, um, off, right?
That is, that is correct, Councilman. Um, medical marijuana and marijuana itself is certainly something that the Narcotics Enforcement Team, uh, does engage, uh, in their, that enforcement, but primarily, that is not what they do. They spend most of their time on, uh, methamphetamine, heroin, which has been a huge increase in the, in, in this area with, um, uh, prescription drugs is a, an enormous, uh, problem that we have, particularly with our young people, and we've, and they spend a lot of time enforcing that. Um, the federal, um, aspect of it, the federal aspect pays for the state aspect of it, that the federal, uh, forfeiture money that we receive, uh, from the DEA officer pays entirely the wage of the NET officer, and that's the only way, that's the only wage that, uh, the Federal Equitable Sharing Act allows us to pay.
Right.
So, uh, without one, we don't have the other. Uh, it also alleviates, uh, the small detective bureau that we do have, uh, it, it relieves them of all narcotics investigations, both local and, uh, larger ones. Um, and as a, as a bonus, the NET team has made available to themselves, to us, and to the other agencies that participate, when we have, um, surveillance issues and other type of crimes. We, on many occasions, just recently, we had a homicide, I'm sure you're all familiar with. Uh, our NET officer brought their entire team down here and deployed their team, and helped us and assisted us in the apprehension of that individual, and they've done in many, uh, we just recently had a armed robbery. Uh, our NET officers spent countless hours, ninety-six hours in, in a five-day period, uh, for, and successfully apprehended an individual that committed an armed robbery on Liburnoy Avenue, uh, a couple, about a month ago. So, we get our, we get our money's worth out of the Narcotics Enforcement Team and the DEA, there's no question.
Right.
And the marijuana aspect of it, although, sure, they, they investigate marijuana cases, it's just a small part of what they do.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, medical marijuana issue needs to be handled northbound on ninety-six at our state capitol. I mean, it, it is what it is. We have to enforce it.
Medical marijuana is a resolved issue in this community and the entire state.
Right.
The, the rules are, are more and more gelling and, and laid out for us, and, um, you know, we, we follow the lead of what the, uh, state legislature and the public court has dictated in that area.
Well, thanks for making the public aware of that, Chief. I appreciate it. That's all I have. I, I just, maybe we could bang our heads together, look down the road a little bit, see what we could do about these two firemen. But I, I know it's, it's at that end right now, but, but that's all I have for, for right now.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Councilman Martin?
Just a clarification question. The move from four-point-six mils in two thousand fourteen to four point, to five-point-four-five-five-two mils in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, how does that lie, and is that consistent with the recommendation in this, either April, or Councilman Pollock can answer this, 'cause I know he's served on this committee? How does that fit in with the original recommendation and foresight of the Citizens Financial Committee before we went out and asked for the headley increase?
Uh, when the committee met five years ago, about five years ago, uh, their recommendation was actually to increase to the maximum last year. Um, so, we are on target, uh, but it was actually two thousand thirteen, um, a year ending two thousand thirteen, that it should've gone to the full amount.
But it's not inconsistent, the, the ask for the headley override, it was not inconsistent with the spirit of the recommendation from the Citizens Committee?
No.
And I think we see why. I mean, they, they saw the same revenue projected trends. I think that's consistent with what they studied as well. Um, it is pretty startling to see that we're actually spending a million dollars less today than we did just three years ago, uh, at an increased rate, and, uh, that's just the nature of what local communities are facing from a budget perspective now. Uh, we continue to try to offer the, all the same great services for a lot less money. Um, that one-point-two-million-dollar deficit this year and last year were very real. Um, and for me, the, the, you know, maybe the, the most difficult part, uh, of this budget was the, the firefighters, but when we accepted that grant, uh, that was a, that bought us some time to have four extra, at the time, four extra people, but we knew full well that that was a, a, a grant that was gonna expire in a number of years, and that we didn't have the money in our, our budget to pay for those folks afterwards. And we accepted it knowing that, and it's a tough decision to let two folks go, but I guess I would like the fire chief, perhaps, just put you on the spot for just a little bit, talk about what a six-man minimum or six-person minimum does. Does it, do you believe that it, um, provides you, affords you the opportunity to, to provide for, as, as he correctly quoted my state of the city, a, a full-service fire department, uh, that has sufficient response time? I mean, just talk, talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind, Chief.
Well, currently, there's no, uh, fire department in the area, including Hazel Park and Madison Heights, that can meet seventeen-ten on their own. That's the whole purpose of the auto aid. Uh, by all responding as sister stations to our fire department, that allows us to get the fourteen to sixteen or fifteen people we need to try and meet seventeen-ten the majority of the time. Uh, the difference of one person from seven-man to six-man is in actuality the difference of the four guys. It takes four on our two-platoon system to make one extra per day. So, that, that's where the difference lies. So, in order to have one extra per day, it's a matter of having four people, one on each unit, or two on each platoon or battalion. As far as safety goes, uh, there are delays. Um, when you have less people, if the ambulance is out, that obviously delays us in meeting those numbers quickly. Uh, two-in, two-out does require us, unless there's a life rescue, to have two crew members ready on the outside, per sending two to four, and on the inside. And, uh, unless we know there's an actual rescue to be made, that would be a delay in time, but that's been the current status, even with seven-man. The big differences is gonna be, um, in general operations, um, having the, uh, other cities also stressed creates a delay in time or delay in size of crew responding, and that's why it's so critically important to stay within the Oakway so that we have mutual aid to call and back us up as quickly as possible. To meet seventeen-ten currently, we have to have the auto aid from Hazel Park, Madison Heights, mutual aid from Royal Oak, and then Southfield to come back in and fill our stations up so that we have crews available immediately.
Thanks. Any, while he's up there, any other questions to the chief? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Well, I just wanted to, um, add some praise here. Um, this has always been our goal, to always do continuous improvement with our budgeting, and I, um, am really pleased, um, about the additional transparency, um, in our, our budgeting process, moving towards priority-based budgeting, when I learned about it two years ago and saw where it could lead us. Um, it was definitely a, a step in the right direction. I know we're not there yet, but we are starting to infuse those concepts into our budgeting, and I hope the public can see, um, the difference in how we're really spending our dollars and making our choices based off of priorities. And so, I just wanted to thank you and Karen and everybody else who sort of tore the budget apart and put it back together again, um, to come up with, um, this clear analysis. Um, and I think it's just been, it's been refreshing, um, as this is my fifth year on Council, um, to get to this point.
I echo, um, Councilwoman Piana's sentiments and, and opinions and thoughts. Um, I've been looking at the budget, or working with the budget, for seven years. Uh, this is the first time that I feel the budget is, is clear. Um, it's very understandable. Um, there's no hidden lines, there's no questionable numbers, um, fancy math going on. As much as I would love to have enough money to afford two, four fire department, you know, firefighters, as much as I would love to afford, um, uh, fancy new streetscapes on, on East Nine Mile, the reality is, we just don't have the funding. And, and I think that we balanced the budget as well as we could, and in most part, it was thanks to, um, our financial department and our city manager.
Yeah, I'd, I'll just echo that. I mean, kudos to the staff. I think this is a major step forward in transparency, and for any residents who haven't looked at or get the opportunity to go out to the website and take a look at the details of the budget, um, the municipal budget is a complex thing. Of course, nobody wants to lay off firefighters. It's a, it's a, it's a painful thing to have to do. We knew with the SAFER grant, that was a temporary solution, and, uh, to keep folks on a little longer, and we've even extended beyond the life of the SAFER grant because we, we value the importance of that, but the, the reality is, is we needed to, uh, make some hard decisions around this budget, and, um, you know, again, I applaud staff for doing it. This is a tough job every year, but I think this is a fair budget that we're putting
I guess I would just add, you know, Council has been working on this budget for about six weeks now, staff for much longer than that, but, you know, one of the things that is still, to me, overwhelmingly, uh, obvious about this is that while the economy in general is improving, our financial situation is relatively the same. Our overall taxable value was actually flat or slightly down because of, um, business properties being down. Uh, we are not seeing an increase in revenue, and I can tell you, our expenses continue to go up, so every year, it gets to be a more and more of a challenge to present a balanced budget to the citizens that provides the services that I think they expect and demand, um, and want, um, at a level that we can afford. And so, I, um, there's tough, there's tough decisions in this budget, but I do applaud the transparency. It was the first time since I've been up here that I could see that this project cost this much. So, in, in the past, a lot of pieces of projects were baked into a lot of different line items, and it was, it was confusing, frankly. Um, so I think we're moving towards a clearer and more transparent budget, uh, but more importantly, the, 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 the issues aren't over. I think you alluded in your slides, we are gonna have to have a conversation with the residents, you know, in the next while about what we do about the headley override that we adopted three years ago. We're gonna have to talk about road bonds and what the residents want to do in terms of fixing our streets going forward, 'cause that bond is gonna expire, so there's a lot more to come. Um, I know we're all committed to, to being as prudent as we can about it, and, uh, I think it's a conservative budget, and appreciate all the hard work.
If I could add one more point, I think, just think it goes without saying, and this Council made a statement about this a few weeks ago, this is working through this budget process with less and less support from the state. Um, and every municipality continues to struggle with this and, and, and move forward on this, so, as much as we can send that message to our, uh, state legislators and governor, um, I think that's important.
Speaking of that, it's a two thousand fifteen City Council goal to help, uh, organize and, uh, come up with some advocacy responses with our partners in the revenue shortfall game of, uh, with our school board, um, DDA, and library, which are all facing the same fates as us, which is impacting the overall quality of life in Ferndale collectively.
Absolutely. Yes.
Uh, any final comments or thoughts on the budget? If not, a motion would be in order.
A move that we adopted by annual budget for fiscal years twenty-fourteen and fifteen and twenty-fifteen and sixteen is submitted by the city manager on April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported, um, by Piana. Any last discussion? Sherlin, could you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Now, a second motion is, is in order. Um, Dan, do you wanna do that as well?
Yep, I'll move that we adopt the appropriations resolution setting tax rates, water and sewer rates, and sanitation fees for fiscal year twenty-fourteen and fifteen, and twenty-fifteen and sixteen, as submitted by the city manager on April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollock. Any further discussion on that item? Sherlin?
Councilmembers Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The budget is adopted. Uh, our next public hearing is on a brownfield plan for nine-eight-one East Saratoga, and Derek, do you wanna introduce that item and tell us what's going on on Saratoga?
Gladly. Um, we're here, this is similar to a lot of projects Council's seen over the last few months. Um, it is a vacant, functionally obsolete industrial building located at nine-eight-one East Saratoga, um, recently purchased by, uh, Mr. Johnston, and, uh, in relation with their existing, existing business. Um, the plan is a basic brownfield redevelopment plan. The property was deemed functionally obsolete, um, by Oakland County. Um, it proposes approximately two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars in eligible activities, including demolition, site prep, um, some other, uh, eligible activities as deemed acceptable by Act three-eighty-one. Um, the project proposes approximately seven-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars in total new investment for the site. Um, the plan, um, proposes to reimburse the eligible activities through the city's local site revolving loan fund, which is something you've heard on a regular basis lately. Um, the, the project includes the, uh, rehabilitation of the entire building for reuse as a, a brewery and some other uses. I'll let Mr. Johnston explain here in a second. Um, and then the reimbursement for eligible activities, uh, we, the city would collect a TIF from the project, uh, going forward to reimburse the revolving loan fund, thus repaying what is put out for the eligible activities. Um, I think with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnston here to explain what the project actually is. We also have Laura from Ossie Environmental to discuss any specifics related to the eligible activities. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Well, good evening, Chris. How are you?
Good, thank you. Uh, eighteen years ago, my wife, Krista, and my brother, Grant, stood here in front of Mayor Chuck Gettard and city council, talking about Woodward Avenue Brewers and what our plans were for that. Uh, fact of the matter is, we really didn't know what we were doing exactly, but we knew exactly what we wanted to do. And, uh, we were a little scared, and there were plenty of times when we looked at each other and said, you know, "What are we doing?" Happy to say that I feel thirty years old again tonight. And, but, uh, having eighteen years passed, there's been a lot of experiences, and I think the most important one that, that we've experienced and enjoyed is being in the community of Ferndale and, and being a part of it. Um, I'm grateful for all the, for this opportunity by the state and the city to, uh, take a blighted building and the project and the property around it and turn it into something much more useful. I think when it's finished, we'll have, uh, created something that will be a source of pride around here, as well as a great opportunity for lots of people, including Ferndale. Basically, the concept is to build a brewery, to can and keg our beer, and a distillery as well, to bottle liquor and distill it. And I think that, much like Woodward Avenue Brewers and the Amory and the Loving Touch and the other things that we've done, I think that there will be some ancillary things that come about because of this project, uh, do, whether it's doing events there and taking away some of the traffic and congestion from events in the city. There's that option. There's the option of doing private events, wedding corporate parties there, um, and those are just things that are contained to that one particular site. I think, much like, uh, the Aaronsons and Garden Press Salsa, we always try to get back to the community. I know that as this project moves forward and, and we grow, which we plan on doing, um, we hope to be a, a part of that and more things in Ferndale and, and be, uh, community leaders and supporters of everything that we can. So, that's kind of the gist of the project, and if you have any questions, I think I can answer them.
Well, no questions from us yet, because this is a public hearing, so, um, I actually have to call the public.
Oh, that's good.
I don't know if your other presenter wanted to speak briefly, or, or you're here for questions, right? Or did you have a-
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be before you, um, and, and to point out that in addition to the tax capture for reimbursement of the loan fund, there is also interest paid back to the city as part of the capture period, um, and we've done a very conservative estimate, so we expect that you'll get paid back sooner than what's in the estimate. We just wanted to estimate it conservatively for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so at this point, I will open the public hear-
To clarify, are you going to rehab this building, or are you going to knock it over?
Rehab.
Okay.
It's, I mean, the biggest, structurally, the walls are fine, ceiling needs to be ripped off, and then a lot of work, just bringing it back up to being a functional building. There's, it's been sitting for a long time in its own water and everything else, and it's certainly outdated in a lot of ways, so.
Okay. I guess that was my second question, maybe Derek. How long has this been vacant?
Several years. I don't have a total, at least the last three or four years I've been here.
About five or six.
And Chris is being overly kind, the building is actually a disaster.
So I wondered if.
Yeah, it's terrible right now. It has been used for some non-certified uses. I think we've had some different building, businesses in there without certificates of occupancy that have done some not-so-nice things to the building. And already, we're seeing a significant improvement just with the Johnsons' ownership of it. So it's been a big improvement already.
Thank you.
I think it's a great reuse of this building, particularly since the project was removing a potential contaminated underground storage tank, which Michigan has tons of underground storage tanks, just contaminating the prop, the ground. So I think just the fact that that it was even done on the property is just a really good start for what we envisioned for that whole area in terms of reinvestment. So I think this is a great project. Fits everything that federal, or not federal, but state requirements and city requirements.
Yeah, you've heard us say this before about these projects, and it is true. This is, this is truly what the intent of the fund and the brownfield program is.
Yep.
The building but for this type of assistance, wouldn't make a lot of sense for anybody to look at for rehabilitation. The fact that it's the Johnsons', I think it's fair to say, from a staff standpoint, we're glad to see them continue their involvement in the city. They've been a catalyst for redevelopment in our commercial corridor and our downtown for years. The fact that they're branching out and spreading out into the industrial area is nothing but a benefit for us, and I think truly what the program is meant for, so.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth. The revolving loan fund, this is exactly what it's designed for. That's why we have it as a tool in our toolbox. And Derek, I want to thank you for your aggressive use of it where appropriate. And where it's appropriate is when you have an obsolete and vacant building that needs a little assistance to get back into shape. And it's, so it's exciting that we're using that tool, and, you know, couldn't be happier for you guys and your success. Jack Aaronson is a big role model to look up to, but you fill, you fill those shoes. You've done a great job in downtown, and I know you'll be successful at that. And we appreciate everything you've done in the city, and so couldn't, couldn't be happier that it's, that we're able to partner with you in particular on this project, so.
You know, we're optimists when it comes to looking at the condition of a building. We're like Charlie Brown and.
You have to be.
Well, this is right here, you know? But really, that's probably more accurate, but I kind of have to tell myself that it's beautiful all the time, so.
Give her a little sentiment to show it to her.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to re, just say thank you for continuing to invest in Ferndale and not shying away from a brownfield. So many investors and developers will not even consider that, and it's nice to see that you're willing to work with that. And I'm curious, have you and your family mapped out dot by dot all of the properties across Ferndale and seen if there's a pattern?
No. Good luck.
All right. We actually need to adopt this, so a motion would be in order if.
I'll do that. I move that the city council approves the attached resolution approving the combined brownfield 381 work plan for 931 East Saratoga. Do I need to read the whole resolution?
I believe so.
Okay.
Support.
So moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Any last comments, questions, concerns? Sherlyn, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, our next order of business is call to audience. Took us a little longer than usual to get here, but it, call to audience is your opportunity to speak to anything that you would like that's not on the agenda, because I'll give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. Please come on up, say your name, your address, and you have three minutes to say whatever you would like. Julia, good evening.
Oh, I forgot my.
Oops. Commissioner Zach, good evening.
Please tab your notes in hand. Good evening, everybody.
Yep.
So, a couple of things. Been working on animal care issues, and I am very excited. It was actually put in Oakland Press today to talk about an animal adoption challenge. Oakland County has applied through the ASPCA Rachel Ray Challenge to adopt 2014 animals in 2014, which is doubling the amount of adoptions. And we can win, first of all, a $25,000 challenge grant, working toward $100,000, up to $600,000, you know? And so, more importantly, we've been working on engaging the community to adopt animals. And so this is an opportunity to really work on that issue. And I know that last week, we trained about 100 volunteers, so we're opening our doors to more volunteers, more opportunities to get the message out there. So I'm asking you, if you're interested, first of all, to like the Oakland County Air Animal Control Center on Facebook. And there are multiple additional adoption events coming up. There's going to be a Father's Day Bow Wow, June 14th, Rescue Me Saturday, and so forth. And they're all online at the Animal Care Control Center, www oakgov.com. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us. I do want to let you know that on all of our phone bills every year, there is a surcharge for 911. And we kept the 911 at 20 cents, and that's much lower than we can charge. And we, you know, we did it last year at 20 cents, we hope to do it. We might see an increase later on, somewhere 2017, 2018. What we are going to need to do is to build out a different network. We're moving in, out of the copper landlines that the phone companies into a new network. And at that point, we might have to increase the surcharge. One thing that I'm excited about, starting this year, we are transitioning into receiving some texts. There's going to be, so that instead of just calling 911, you're going to be able to text for emergency calls, and that's going to be a kind of a short-term solution until we have the new network. But I think it's going to be a wonderful, better service for all of us. You could send pictures that way. Obviously, water reading in the newspaper, Oakland County, was ordered back to mediation along with Macomb County around the bankruptcy, looking at creating a water authority. And it's an interesting challenge. I still, as the Board of Commissioners, anything that could be mediated, I have to take a vote on it. So it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. Clearly, no one wants to build a new water system, but we also want to make sure that we're investing in the existing infrastructure, and that we're creating a fair deal for our residents. And we don't want our water bills to skyrocket any more than they already have. There's been a series of multiple public service announcements that are, that have been created by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners regarding gun safety. We did do a study last year. There was the first public safety initiative talking about video games, and that parents ought to be looking at ratings on them. We are going to be issuing another public safety announcement on mental health, and May is Mental Health Month. And when there are things like mass shootings, things like that, people always assume that it is someone with mental health disease. That isn't necessarily the case, but we do want to educate the public that it's treatable disease. And I do hope to be able to do, to offer a mental health first aid training course throughout my district for both youth and for both adults. They are free training sessions, there's grant funding, and I hope to be offering that, you know, engaging partners and doing that. And, let me see what else is on my list that you should know about. Those are basically, we are going to do Gun Safety Awareness Month, do another public safety piece on June 6th. We're not taking a position on owning a gun, but clearly, there are also many deaths because people don't lock their guns, you know, use gun lock safety, and best practices, children get hold of the guns. And so we want to promote, if you are a gun owner, that you do practice good gun safety control. Any questions?
Excellent. Any questions about our county commissioner?
I do want to make one comment on the budget. You know, I serve on the Oakland County Finance Committee.
Yes.
And represent five communities, and.
We served together there for.
Absolutely. And so, what, Ferndale, you've done a fabulous job working with a very difficult circumstance of budgets. You know, you are definitely trying to stay ahead of the curve, but you're not alone in struggling. Every community that I represent, including Oakland County, is how do I manage a decreasing, shrinking, you know, budget? And clearly, we do need to look at the overall tax structure, and we have to have a state legislature that's willing to look at that. And I don't see anything happening this year during election year, silly season, but I hope that maybe we could have some will to speak out and look at how do we restructure things so that we don't keep losing dollars.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, as always. Now you've got your notes.
Good evening, council. My name's Julie Music, 436 Silman Street, and I wanted to talk to you about some exciting events that are happening in Ferndale. The first one being Clean the Ferndale Up on May 17th. It's a great chance for residents to get out and do some volunteer service in our community. I've worked on it since the first year of Clean the Ferndale Up, and it's a great time. My son and I have cleaned out parks, and this year, we plan to do the same thing, working on some of the east side parks. So if you would like to sign up for Clean the Ferndale Up, go to cleantheferndaleup.com. And if you sign up, you can register there, you'll get a free t-shirt, there's all sorts of giveaways and goodies that day, and then you'll get some chance, a chance to participate in bettering our city. And of course, Ferndale Pride is right around the corner, so I'm going to quickly speak about some of the events leading up to Ferndale Pride. The first one is on May 30th, our library is going to present a Pride prom, and there is going to be a Bears Dinner also at the Lutheran Church. Then on May 31st, we kick off with the 5K Rainbow Run presented by the Chamber of Commerce. And then Motor City Casino Hotel will present Ferndale Pride. Ferndale Pride this year includes a ton of different events, including a rally for gender equality. Dave Coulter will be performing a marriage ceremony, so couples are able to have a marriage or commitment ceremony. And then our headliner this year is Tony Luca from The Voice. He is also, hails from Pontiac, Michigan. Rosie's on Sunday will present two drag shows on the 3rd and the 5th. And then a week later, the Bears will have their annual car wash, which is a great time.
Oh, it's a popular event.
It's one of my favorite events, especially tell people we're going to something for charity, and then you show up at the Bears' car wash, it's a good time. We also would like to thank our sponsors, our diamond sponsors at least, because I couldn't list all our sponsors in three minutes, but Suburban GMC of Ferndale, Rosie O'Grady's, and a special thank you to Wendy Gross, who's super helpful over at Rosie O'Grady's, Tammy Jo Urban, and Between the Lines. And if you would like to sign up to volunteer for Ferndale Pride, you can go to ferndalepride.com. There's a volunteer tab, and you can sign up to volunteer. We rely on a lot of volunteers to get that day to roll out smoothly, and to be as much fun as it always is.
Thanks. Thanks, Julia. Good evening.
Good evening. Sherry Wells, expanding on Family Fundale. We have the Ferndale Library, which is our downtown anchor, is having something, as well as its usual used book sale. The Ferndale Rec Department will have all of its materials out, about its summer camp programs, Treat Dreams, Green Thumb Garden Center, Rainy Day Hobbies, which is the first for this year. Rust Belt Market is going to have a dance around an old-fashioned maypole. Easy Like Sunday, Modern Natural Baby, Painting with a Twist came in on this year. Nature's Playhouse is having its grand opening that same weekend, so this was absolutely perfect timing. Mayishi Martial Arts is having two demonstrations, one at 1:00, that's African Brazilian martial arts, and at 2:00, karate and Filipino stick fighting. And the downtown Ferndale Bike Shop, we're inviting people to bring helmets for adjustments and bikes for bike checks, so that they can have a safe bike summer. And the Ferndale Environment Commission is going to have the idea of a home improvement materials exchange on their agenda, so don't throw it in the trash just yet. Please hang on to that stuff so that we can trade it with each other and not have it, the city have to pay for it being trashed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. I was going to talk about something else tonight, but there's six people that I want to thank for saying hi tonight. Greg Pollocka, Melanie Piana, Dave Coulter, Mike Lennon, Dan Martin, and Dan Christ. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? Mr. Sinsel, how are you, sir?
Hey, how's it going, everybody, mayor, councilmen and women, great citizens of Ferndale, of course. First, I just want to say about the budgeting process, I really feel for the city managers. I know April, you have, you have a hard job, what's going on right now with the headly amendment and Prop. 8. After 2008 happened, you know, the taxable rate, we've been, it's been going up, but our, you know, revenues aren't, but the expenditures are going up. So it is a very difficult process. I just want to let everybody know, I do have a finance degree, so this stuff is actually very interesting to me. I went to U of M Dearborn, took the bus for two hours there, two hours back to get that degree. Wow. So, yeah, I'm educated in finance, and I find it very interesting. And again, I just want to say, it is very hard for the city managers. I know Hazel Park, they're having a rough time over there. So we, as citizens, we need to understand that, you know, something on the surface can look the way it looks on the surface, and I was talking to Councilman Pollocka about this, and I know from experience, you got to get to know things a little bit more, you got to actually understand, you know, the grander scale of things. It's not just always what's on the surface. So I just wanted to say that. But also, on a lighter, a lighter twist of things, I'm actually having a fundraiser coming up. Yeah, it's actually great. It's on the Peace Officers' Day. It actually makes sense, and I didn't even know that. I think it's appropriate. So it's going to be May 15th, which is actually Thursday, and it's going to be at 7:00 PM at Como's. I invite absolutely everybody to come. I'm running for state representative here, I'm running as a Democrat. I'm a hometown guy, born and raised here in Ferndale. My family was born and raised in Ferndale. I'm really excited to be running. It's very exciting. We did some ballot initiatives in Oak Park and Hazel Park, and I think they're going to be very successful, as we are here in Ferndale. And like I said, I just invite everybody, come get to know me a little bit better. Everything isn't what it always looks like on the surface. So, again, that's Como's Restaurant, that's Thursday, May 15th, at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are things that we enact in one motion, but let me first read the consent agenda, and, yeah, let me begin that. Item A is the approval of a minutes of the special and regular meetings held March 24th, 2014, and the special budget workshop meeting held March 29, 2014, and the special and regular meetings held April 14th. Item B is the approval to purchase the parts inventory quoted by Traffic and Safety Control Systems at a cost of $16,162.50 to be charged to the auto parking fund. Item C is the approval to purchase a Nexus Network Managed Video System Controller and Digital Video Server and related. So it's gonna be May 15th, which is actually Thursday, and it's gonna be at 7:00 PM at Como's. I invite absolutely everybody to come. I'm running for state representative here, I'm running as a Democrat. I'm a hometown guy, born and raised here in Ferndale, my family was born and raised in Ferndale. I'm really excited to be running, it's very exciting. We did some ballot initiatives in Oak Park and Hazel Park, and I think they're gonna be very successful as we are here in Ferndale. And like I said, I just invite everybody, come get to know me a little bit better, everything isn't what it always looks like on the surface. So, again, that's Como's Restaurant, that's Thursday, May 15th at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are things that we enact in one motion, but let me first read the consent agenda, and, yeah, let me begin that. Item A is the approval of a minutes of the special and regular meetings held March 24th, 2014, and the special budget workshop meeting held March 29, 2014, and the special and regular meetings held April 14th. Item B is the approval to purchase the parts inventory quoted by Traffic and Safety Control Systems at a cost of $16,162.50 to be charged to the auto parking fund. Item C is the approval to purchase a Nexus Network Managed Video System Controller and Digital Video Server and related hardware and software from VTP Inc. at a cost of $12,793 to be charged to the capital outlay account. That is for the cable department, by the way, so that our cables works correctly, because it hasn't lately. Item D, approval of the request to allow alcohol at the Ferndale Public Library for two special events, May 2nd and 3rd, 2014, for the Metro Times Blowout, and May 30th, 2014, for the Pride Prom, provided a one-day MLCC permit is delivered and posted at the event, as submitted by our Ferndale Library Board. We've skipped item E and put that on the regular agenda. Item F is the approval of a special event permit for the Rainbow Run 2014 on Saturday, May 31st, 2014. Item G is the approval of a contract with ALSA for program year 2013, as submitted by Community and Economic Development Director. Item H is the approval to execute the reimbursement agreement for the 831 East Lewiston Combined Brownfield Plan. Item I is an adoption of a resolution honoring former Ferndale resident David Perquette, as submitted by the mayor, and I'm gonna read that in a moment if you don't mind. And item J is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. Let me, if you don't mind, take a moment to read the proclamation for former Ferndale resident David Perquette. And are any of David Perquette's family or friends here? I think, how are you folks? Thanks for coming tonight. Let me read this, and you'll understand what I'm talking about. So, this is a proclamation from the city of Ferndale honoring Ferndale resident David Perquette for his service to our country in Vietnam. Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to former Ferndale resident David Perquette, who made the ultimate sacrifice during his service to our country in the Vietnam War. David spent most of his life in Ferndale before moving to Birmingham at the age of 17. Less than two years later, David Perquette was fighting for his country in Vietnam and on January 16th, 1968, lost his life in Quan Nhe Province. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, my apologies. David Perquette was a credit to this community and is still fondly remembered by his family and friends and this community all of these years later. It is with our heartfelt appreciation that we remember his meritorious service to our country, and that is adopted unanimously this evening. If there's anyone of his family or friends that would like to say a word or two, I would invite you to do that now, if you choose. Not trying to put you on the spot. And I will present this to you as well, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Yes, my father moved to Ferndale about 1943, and graduated from Lincoln High School, and played football, and then went on to World War II, and then returned to Ferndale, married a sweetheart, that's my mom. And we were lifelong residents here, and a member of the Oaks, the VFW, the American Legion, Ferndale here. I have an issue with the Ferndale Memorial Association as to the technicality of his first 17 years in Ferndale and moving to Birmingham for less than two years, that his name is not on the memorial. I had emailed the Memorial Association, it wasn't given the respect for response. I had to find out through social media that that was the issue.
Well, since this all began, Mayor, I was first emailed by, I can't remember her name, and then I got the ball rolling a little bit, and then we had the resolution adopted. And I did some checking with the Memorial Society, which is a separate entity, not governed by this body here. They have their own rules, and I was told that his name cannot go on the wall because it's on another wall, and that's one of their guidelines.
Well, everybody's name's on the wall, Washington.
Well, let me, I believe, I see Cindy here.
Cindy Wilcock?
Somebody from the Memorial Society here.
Oh, no, from the Memorial Society. I don't think so.
Nobody's here.
Oh, Cindy, yeah. Cindy Wilcock.
That's Joanne.
Oh, Joanne.
I saw Cindy here. What I would like, what you need to do is, we can't, I can't, we can't control the Memorial Society, so maybe set up a meeting, and you could discuss how you can come to a mutual agreement on this issue.
I don't know that we can actually come to an agreement on it. We have a protocol for the Vietnam Memorial Wall, and that protocol was that they had to be a resident of the city to go on the wall. All veterans that pass away that have had any connection with Ferndale, Oak Park, or Pleasant Ridge, are honored where their name read on Memorial Day of the previous year that they have passed away. Occasionally, we do miss them. I can't say of 45 years ago that it was red or not, because I wasn't associated with it at that time. They had done all very extensive research on which residents, at the time that the memorial was made. The Memorial Association was not the one who did that, that was done by a private citizen in the city. But the protocol is, is that they have to be a registered, basically a Ferndale driver's license. When you are in the service, that's exactly what you do, is you keep your residential driver's license, Michigan driver's license, from wherever you are. One of the questions that I had in particular was, well, what happens if they had been a resident, they went into, say, career service, and they moved and had a residence elsewhere? Their name would be read, it would not go on the wall. So they do have to be, the priorities of that is that they do have to be, had to be a resident of the city at the time.
Thanks.
We've gotta put a, you know, it's like, well, okay, I went to kindergarten in Ferndale, or that sort of thing, but this is what the criteria is, so that's the way we have to do it, and follow that criteria.
Okay.
Thank you.
I understand your plight, sir, but there's really not much the city council can do.
But sir, the one thing, before you leave, I just want to say, the one thing we can do, because we don't write the rules for the Memorial Association, but I hope, I know that's a token, but I hope you understand that this community appreciates your dad's service, and thank you for coming out tonight, and we're truly honored that you came out tonight, and we appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is, is there any discussion, other discussion on, well, we need a motion first, I guess, on the consent?
Yes, oh, yes, sir. I would just like to support Gary Perquette for his brother David. My brother's Charles Maria, his name is on the wall. And his younger brother, Anthony. I lived in Ferndale for 40 years, had to move away because of a disability for my son. I wish my brother's name was not on the wall. I wish his name wasn't on the wall in Washington, DC, because then maybe he'd be here and tell us what the boys went through. I thank you for your resolution, I understand your hands are tied, so to speak, but I just wanted to voice my support for a Vietnam veteran.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for your loss as well, sir. Thank you.
I'm Bianca Hendren.
Hi.
And I think I initially wrote my note to-
Yes, yes.
Councilman Lennon, and I'm here also to support David getting on this memorial. He was my childhood friend, and it's, you know, if you really think about it in like real life, this is real life. He'll never be a husband, he'll never be a father, he'll never be a grandfather or an uncle. All of that was taken away from this guy as a kid, 20 years old, on January 16th, 1968, while defending our country, which includes every single individual in this room, by the way. I think it's a shame that this cannot happen. I think it's, and it was just brought to my attention too, that the Chin Memorial, Vincent Chin, now I'm not comparing, I don't want to compare apples to oranges here, but he was not a resident.
No.
He was, he was employee, and he has his own special, he was employed, I think, by the Chinese restaurant or something? And I get why he's there, but I don't get why David's not there. So, that's all, that's all I want to say. I do want to thank you, though, for the resolution that you made in David's honor, that is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, a motion on the consent agenda would be in order.
I actually have a question. It's been a few years, which is actually kind of sad since I've been over there, but on, in Garbutt Park, not Garbutt Park-
Gary Park.
Gary Park, thank you. There is a small memorial that Mr. Mahan, the Mahan family created, various, for various wars. Now, are there stones there for individual people? Like I said, it's been a few years since I've been there. Have people placed individual stones for people? Is that an option?
There are stones there, Greg, and I believe they do have some names on them. I don't know who's maintaining that right now.
For the longest time, it was Mr. and Mrs. Mahan that maintained it. I'm assuming the neighbors within the community-
Joe has, and she's gone elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm assuming the neighbors are still maintaining it to some degree.
I could probably get a name.
But I'm wondering if maybe a stone could be placed there, at the very least?
I'm not aware, but I think it's worth pursuing.
We could look into that.
Not aware, yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Gordon Matzma, resident of Oak Park, but I have strong interest in Ferndale. Greg, the park you're talking about, in the small northwest corner of-
Gary Park.
Gary Park, Roosevelt Park, as I know it.
You're a long time.
For years and years has, was maintained by Barbara and Joe Mahan. Barbara and Joe Mahan, oh no, are no longer with us. There are individual plaques scattered from the veterans. From my understanding, that Mr. and Mrs. Mahan are the ones that put those plaques at the various gardens and what have you. I don't see if whoever's going to take over the responsibility of that park and taking care of it, whether it be the neighbors, the community, or whom have you, would have no problem having David's name put on a plaque and put in the memorial park there at the northwest corner of Roosevelt Ground Park, Roosevelt Gary Park. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Parks and Rec Director is here, I'm not gonna put you on the spot now, because I don't think we know the answer to this, but could you help maybe look into how that particular area is maintained now, and if there are guidelines or regulations that have been put in place about that, and maybe get back to council, Joe? Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, I still need a motion on the consent agenda. A move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any other discussion on any items of the consent agenda, either from the public or council? All right, Chairwoman, would you call the role on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmembers Lennon-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Pollica-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Thanks. Moving on to our regular agenda item, item A is the consideration of sidewalk sale at Seasonal Corner on May 9th to the 11th, 2014. Who is actually introducing this item? Is this Chairwoman's issue?
I can take this one, sure.
All right.
Several times since I've been in Ferndale, Ms. Cardenas has requested a permit to do a special sale, and there's been conversation and discussion amongst staff and council as to the appropriate place for that sale, whether it be on the sidewalk, in the median, on the grass, and which side, the sidewalk, if on the grass.
Discussion is least.
So, anyway, I included in the packet some historical information. The last time that this came before council that I found was 2011, when she requested the, to use the right-of-way between the sidewalk and curb, and council ended up approving sidewalk only with the execution of a licensing agreement. The reason being, there are difficult sightlines traffic-wise at that corner, the need to preserve pedestrian right-of-way has been at issue, and I believe in the past it has worked well to do it on the sidewalk with the licensing agreement, which is different from what she is requesting. That is what I am bringing before you.
So just to be clear, the item as presented, is the way that it has gone the past several years, or is modified from the way it's been?
My recommendation is that we do it the way it was done in 2011, which is on the sidewalk only with a licensing agreement, with a license agreement.
That is what is represented in this?
Yes, that Ms. Cardenas' request is that it be on the, in the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the curb.
And if I may, beyond last year, though, it has been approved both ways in the past, correct? That's my understanding.
I believe so.
Prior to that, yes. But since 2011, it has been approved?
2011 is the last time I have recorded it coming before council.
I believe that is the last time we took it up in Carlotta.
I gave up for a while.
Was that?
I gave up for a while.
You gave up for a while, but you're back, so why don't you make your pitch again?
I'll do some new faces, so.
Good evening. Do you want to just briefly state your name, even though we know, and-
Carlotta Cardenas, and I own Seasonal Corner, 1011 Liver Noise Ferndale.
And tell us a little bit about how you'd like us to modify this, is what I'm guessing you're here to do.
I would like to use the, as you've seen, I drew a drawing, and it's, I guess, from years past, they thought I wanted to go in the middle of the median, some people, but I just wanted, there's a large piece of grass, grassy area that I want to use, and it's probably 15 feet at least wide to use instead of the sidewalk. I'd rather not block the sidewalk, because my building's right up against the sidewalk, and I'd like people to be able to walk their dogs. They come down with wagons on that day, with kids and buggies, and I don't want to block that. And I'd like to use that grassy area for donuts and coffee, because that day we give out donuts and coffee, we have a raffle, we give away $50 shopping spree, and I've been doing this for 21 years, holding that party, the annual re-grandopening party, Wednesday weekend.
May I through the chair?
Of course.
How high is your materials going to be? Waist level, 3 feet, 5 feet, 2 feet?
Yeah, well, yeah, there'll be hanging baskets. I like kind of decorate with the hanging baskets, and maybe some rods with hanging baskets on them. It's nothing that, the way my building is situated, it's on such an angle, nothing that I put there would ever block traffic's view. You'd have to drive down there to see how it's angled, and it would never block any street lights or anything.
Yeah. Well, and to me, that's one of the interesting things, is that there's a traffic light at that intersection, so if someone's going to, you know, go through the light, they're gonna go through it illegally, you know, if they're not gonna see, you know, if you're gonna get into an accident, it's gonna be someone running a red light, not because they missed someone because this material was blocking their view.
Chief, I think that has been, if I recall, part of the issue in the past, is the sightlines on that corner, so could you share with us your perspective about visibility and sightlines on that corner?
Yes, Your Honor. Our concern is-
Carlotta, would you just, if you don't mind, just let him, because folks at home can't hear if he's not at the microphone.
Yes, Your Honor, our concern is and has been with this incident that we keep the sightlines and the individual pieces of things for sale less than 2 feet tall. It is a close quarter intersection, pedestrians and indoor vehicles do have sightline issues with anything that's taller than 2 feet between the sidewalk and the curb. So, we have no objection, so long as those restrictions in that agreement are followed, is that we keep, in the past, we've had trestles out there, things that are tall as 4 or 5 feet. The arrangements that we had the last time that this came before council was that we kept these at lower level between the sidewalk and the curb, and then kept the sidewalk open for pedestrian traffic, as well as ADA issues. Other than that, we have no objections to this. Other than that, we have no protections in this. Closer to that intersection, the more, the taller the individual items impact on the sightlines for vehicles making left turns from West Marshall onto Levernoy, and then the vehicles on Levernoy itself making the turn onto westbound West Marshall.
And Chief, have, have we had incidents during that weekend in the past? Has there ever been an incident caused by the material that she's displaying?
No. This is what we're trying to prevent, isn't it?
No, I understand. I just want to make sure that, my understanding is, there's never been an issue over the years with the material?
Over the years, we've had issues with the, with the, not following the rules that we had laid down and using the sidewalk and cluttering the sidewalk with items for sale. It had been a continual problem, and we had formalized it, and it came to council the last couple of times. So, so long as the parameters that have been laid out by the city attorney in that agreement, we're fine with that.
Okay. And in the agreement that you're fine with, I, I guess, I want to make sure I'm clear about this. So, the piece that she's talking about between the curb and the sidewalk, is any part of that acceptable to use?
Yes, as drafted.
As drafted?
As drafted, the license agreement would allow for the applicant to utilize the area between the curb and the sidewalk for her showings, her structures, her displays, as long as it does not exceed a height of two feet.
Height of two feet. Is there a minimum from the curb, too? No, just a two-feet minimum?
It has to be off of, you know, it's got to be between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, just so we're clear, that, that's actually, the license agreement in your packet this evening is, was prepared, when I reviewed the initial request from the applicant, the, I, I think the clerk has actually recommended, based on her, the historical consideration of prior councils, that it go on the council, go on the sidewalk, rather than go in that area between the curb and the sidewalk. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Yes. And I, I had requested input from other departments, but, Dan was the one who responded.
I'm slightly confused, too, but what is actually going to be in this space?
Her displays, but it's not going to be higher than two feet. I, you know, I think the applicant should say what's going to be there.
You know, I wanted to put some hanging baskets and hang them up or something, but, you know, two feet isn't very high. You know, two feet's like this.
Right.
So, I mean, that's really not a lot.
And then you wanted, you'll be offering, I guess, I guess...
I want to have a table with donuts and coffee out there, pot for the kids and that.
Right. And if it's raining, you'll want an awning.
No. I'm going to bring it inside if it rains. I'll have to, but I'd rather have it out on the lawn.
So, the table, obviously, would be higher than two feet.
Yeah, it'd be higher than three, be like a table.
Increase the height.
But Chief, your, your perspective is that higher than two feet is an impediment to the visibility of the intersection?
Well, I don't understand, because, you know, on Pearson, this person's got all these flower, or all these bushes and everything planted. No one can see around that corner. You know, on my street on Emwell, there's, there's cars to be parked. They park in front of the buildings, and I can never even get off Emwell to make a left turn. You can't ever see. So, I don't know what I'm blocking. I can't even turn off some of these streets on Levernoy, because there's things blocking.
Thank you. But my question was actually to the chief, so if you don't mind, Chief, would you help me understand? Yep.
When this was, was drafted, Your Honor, it was, the, two feet was the height that we had agreed upon. Can you have something higher than that in different locations farther away from the street? I suppose so, but that was not what was proposed to us. We said two feet. We said, yeah, we're fine with two feet.
Who proposed the two feet?
I believe it's what we had...
Well, that, that comes from previous years.
Right.
Right.
It comes from a prior license agreement that was utilized in the past.
For this property?
For this property, based on a discussion of council previously, so, you know, I don't, I think that it could be a different number if council and the police chief are okay with a, a different number.
Can these baskets sit on the ground? Do they have to be on a table? I guess if they're hanging baskets, that would be...
I can put them on the ground, but I just wanted to decorate this couple of rods with the hanging, but I wasn't going near the curb. I was way more near the sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, and I think, Chief, your concern is, the closer that you get to the corner, that it should be lower. So, if you're 10 feet from the corner, on Levernoy, if you're 10 feet north of the corner, you could have something that's three or four feet tall, correct?
Yes, but then, my only issue is that I had not seen it. What was proposed to me was the two-foot, which I said that I was fine with. If you want to amend that, I would kind of like to see a plan as to where the higher things would be and how high they would be. But you are right, Councilman, is that the farther away from the curb, farther away from the Levernoy curb, the less impact it would have with the sightlines.
If I may through the chair, the agreement actually states in Section 7 that it shall not be placed on the subject of property under a height of two feet without written consent of the chief of police, so you already have the power to adjust it, according to this agreement.
I understand.
Okay. Yeah. Since we, Chief, one more question for you. Since we adopted, I'm still not clear, is this what we relatively adopted in 2011? This is essentially what we are operating under now? Have there been compliance issues?
Recently, no, there has not.
Since 2011, I mean?
I don't believe so.
Has not been done since 2011.
Pardon me?
The event has not been held since 2011.
Oh, it hasn't been held? You haven't been doing this?
It has been.
Oh.
But she hasn't been using that space since 2011? Based on this kind of situation of having to come to council and talk for an hour about...
We spent an hour and a half. And I've been doing this as well before.
Yeah.
Right.
It's ridiculous. It really is. I'm just a seasonal business. I'm only there 90 days.
Yep.
And all I want to do is have a party and give back to the community, so.
So, we don't even have a motion yet, so we're technically not supposed to be discussing this yet, but a motion would allow us to have this conversation in greater detail.
Could I, could I interject? I live right in that area, and Carlotta has had the sale every year, and she does not put any of her flowers, anything high, on that corner that interferes with traffic being able to see and stuff.
Because she's been prohibited to.
And I want to let you know that this is what, it's been done in the past. She does not have anything that, that hinders being, visibility around that corner at all.
Because that's the rules that we're looking at now, the same rules that we've been...
But that's what I, I just want to say, this is what I have seen after 45 years of being there.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you. Monica, do you want to speak to this?
Monica Mills.
I'm sorry?
I worked in that area for 11 years, and before all this became an issue, there were plenty of plants there. I don't see a problem anywhere more than any other corner that might have something in between the sidewalk and the curb. For instance, when I'm trying to make a right-hand turn off of Plantavon onto Nine Mile, in front of the local kitchen, there's one of the large pink pots that we love all the flowers in, there's been a Christmas tree in there since fall. You cannot see around it. You could not make a right-hand turn on Red unless you were in an SUV, and I do not drive that. So, it seems to me she's called out more than any other area in the city, and I didn't even know this was going to come up today, but I thought this might...
Thank you for sharing. There's a Christmas tree at the local?
Yeah, in the, in the big pot.
Yes, I didn't pay that much attention. Okay. Oh. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to grant permission for the use of the area between the sidewalk and the curb in front of Seasonal Corner, 1011 Levernoy, for the purpose of exhibiting goods, wares, or merchandise for sale from Friday, May 9th to Sunday, May 11th, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., to the extent that said merchandise, goods, and wares are displayed on side, on the median only, that the ability of pedestrians to navigate the sidewalk is preserved and contingent on Carlotta Cardenas' execution, executing the attached indemnification and license agreement on behalf of Seasonal Corner.
May I offer a friendly amendment, or do we need to second first?
Probably second it.
I don't know, Dan?
I'll second it, and then I'll offer a friendly amendment.
All right.
I would say, because we would need to say the attached amended indemnification and license agreement, not the attached agreement.
Oh, yes, you're correct.
No, the, the license agreement, as submitted to you, exactly follows Mr. Polika's motion.
Okay.
It is for the area between the sidewalk and the curb.
And the curb. But there's a restriction in the...
What, there is a restriction in there?
Oh, in the height.
Saying he doesn't want the restriction, because I understand the motion.
Yeah.
Oh.
I got you. Yes.
No restriction.
Well, he didn't, I mean, he, his motion didn't speak to that, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood his motion.
Do you still support it?
Sure. For discussion.
Yeah, my motion did not have any restriction. It, it, to height.
Well, it did, unless you...
But it references the indemnification, which I believe does.
The license agreement, which does.
The license agreement.
Technically, your motion does, unless you, because you've referenced that, so you'd have to...
Have the two-feet requirement. Are you trying to remove the height requirement?
Um, that would be nice.
Okay, that's your intention.
Well, the intention, yes, the intention was...
Thank you, Dan, if you'd, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it, right now, it, it would defer the issue as it relates to additional height to the police chief and the traffic control officer, who would presumably have an opportunity to talk to the applicant about what exactly it is, and perhaps stage it back in light of the council's comments, so that safety issues are preserved while still allowing her to, to have her displays more than, more than two feet high where appropriate. And that's, that's the way the license agreement, the provision of the license agreement as drafted.
Okay.
Whether it's consistent with your motion, I, I don't know.
Well, I think that she should be allowed to have something that's there, three feet or four feet tall, if it's, you know, 15 feet from the corner, and the chief has no issue. Now, if it's eight feet tall, right next to the corner, obviously, that's going to be an issue, and I think the chief should be able to address that if necessary.
And for me, that's why we hire a police chief and pay him good money, to make the decision of, is this an obstacle or not? And if he goes out there and decides it's an impediment to traffic, then he has the ability in this licensing agreement to say, you got to lower it, and if he doesn't, then he doesn't, and I, I trust the chief to make that call. So, I, I wouldn't, I'm in favor of your motion. I'm not really in favor of changing the, the agreement, because it already puts that, that in his, his purview to do.
The flexibility is there.
That's how I read it.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, with the consent of the police, chief of police?
Are we in discussion mode right now?
Yes.
Okay, then I definitely agree with the way you presented it. I just don't read it that way, but I'll defer to Dan. If that gives her the right to exercise good judgment, and the police chief or the... It provides the chief with discretion.
The chief, correct. But it allows her to set it up higher, perhaps, off the curb, as long as the chief's okay with it.
To tell, to tell the chief what she's planning to do, yeah, and get his consent to a modification or an increase over that two feet. That's what it provides.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say, I'm, I'm actually the person that encouraged Jeanne Davis to visit you the other day and have you come down and put this on the agenda, because I think we need to support local businesses.
I wasn't coming anymore. She told me, why aren't you doing this anymore? And I said, because of what goes on here is ridiculous, you know?
Yeah, because what was happening several years ago, I thought was ridiculous, and, hopefully, we've cleaned some of that up.
Yes, I see that.
For, for the next years to come, because honestly, you're asking for three days to do something, and on that same weekend, we have Boy Scouts that put up a canopy, selling flowers in the median on Nine Mile, and no one says anything, and there's no, there's no payment or fee that's made, so.
I, I feel like I'm always picked on, you know, and I'm only there seasonally, and there's really no more businesses down on Levernoy, and why do we close or anything? It's kind of desolate down there, you know? People are always coming up to me when I open, boy, are we glad to see you, something going on here, you know? Families come in there with their kids and stuff, and just livens up the corner, is what they tell me, so. But I thank you for that.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions, comments?
Just to say that we've always made decisions about being business-friendly, and we've always bent over backwards to make accommodations for business, and I think this story started out, or at least when I started on council, was about making sure the sidewalk was clear because items were in the sidewalk, and then it was in the public right-of-way, and so this has been an evolving story, and you are trying to find different ways to provide access to, to your goods and, and to your store. But our job is to make sure that we're providing, offering fair application of our rules and regulations where possible, so, or all the time, so. That's kind of how I perceive this.
All right. Sherlin, would you call the role, please?
Certainly. Council members Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
No.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to regular item, regular agenda item B, which is former consent agenda item E, which is the consideration of a special event permit for Ferndale Pride, and I pulled it because I have spoken with Julia, who is the grand poobah, the president, the mayor of Pride, I don't know what exactly your title is, many, she wears many titles, and, but if, who I know had some questions about some of the, the fees, and so I wanted to give her an opportunity to ask about, ask her questions.
Okay, well, first, I want to thank Michael Larry, who has been very helpful to me. As you can imagine, this is a giant learning curve that I'm on, and I'm trying to do it on a timeline of a teacher, so he's even taking super early texts from me, and I really do appreciate all your help, especially at the last minute today, Michael. The only fee that we're really looking at as being a huge increase is the DPW fee. The estimate for this year is $1,968. Last year, it was, the estimate was $1,280. So, that is the, the cost that we're looking at being the greatest increase for us. This year, we've assembled a team led by Sherry Wells for recycling and also for garbage cleanup. Last year, we did the majority of the garbage cleanup all by volunteer, actually, all the garbage cleanup by volunteer, and I know that's not all the DPW does, but it is a good portion of that day, and so we're looking to still do that with volunteers. So, that is the main number that we wanted to look at adjusting, and I wanted to bring that up.
And I think, is, we have a, can you help explain how the estimate, and I just want to clarify, so the estimate last year was $1,280. The actual cost ended up being $1,444, $47, right?
Actually, that's reversed.
Oh, that's the other way around?
$1,444, $47 was the estimate.
Oh. And the actual cost was $1,280? Is that correct?
No, that's, that's wrong. Estimated cost is $1,280.
It's not how it's presented here, Councilman.
Yeah, the, the cost that I've been given from last year, I wasn't here at that time, but I had a cost of $1,443, $47.
So, okay, so that's the actual cost.
Correct.
Okay. So, it went, it did go over budget a couple hundred dollars, and now, so from $1,444, now the estimated cost for this year has gone up to $1,968, another, another $500.
That is correct.
Can you explain what happened there?
Yes. Basically, we, we were looking at providing the same services as last year, with the exception that it was requested that garbage in the garbage cans along Nine Mile be cleaned up the morning prior to the event, so that was an additional cost, and then there were, cost, um, and then, uh, there were, it appears there was, uh, stuff in the dumpsters, um, I do know that all our compacters are, uh, emptied on Thursdays, with the exception of the West Troy and Allen, which is emptied on Mondays and Thursdays, uh, so this cost also includes, uh, providing a roll-off dumpster for any overflow trash.
So, here's where a bit of the disconnect happens.
Okay.
I was not working on that part of Pride last year, um, as far as I know, those garbage cans were supposed to have been cleaned out, um, however, they were cleaned out the night before, and by the time we got there, they were full again, from, um, just Friday night.
From the previous nights.
From Friday night. So, I don't know if we were billed for that last year, and it just didn't happen, um, I think maybe Greg could speak to that, because he was, um, on board with, with the financials, but I'm not sure if that's the appropriate, so...
Actually, what happens is, and it's going to happen again this year, those trash bins are cleaned out on Fridays, but our event happens the weekend after Memorial Day, which means the trash removal is a day late, therefore it takes place on Saturday. Those trash, the people that pick up that trash is actually the contracted people, and when they tried to come down the street, we had it blocked, and therefore couldn't clean out the bins. So, that's going to happen again this year, unless DPW makes a special trip this year to clean it out either that, that, early that morning, or late after the crowd Saturday night. Does that make sense?
Yeah. All right, I'll admit it, I'm not sure I totally a hundred percent understood that. Um, so...
Okay, the trash is contract, for, for that part of the city, the trash is contracted. DPW actually doesn't clean those bins.
Right, okay, yes.
Okay, so, on Monday, Memorial Day was a holiday, so everything was delayed one day, so normally those bins are cleaned out on Friday. For Memorial Weekend, it would be cleaned out on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Saturday, the street was already closed off because of Pride.
So, that...
So, they couldn't get in to clean out the bins.
Okay.
They weren't cleaned out on Friday.
Okay.
There was no arrangement made...
I got, now I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, there was no arrangement made with the contract company on Friday to clean it out that day.
Is there a separate line item for just that particular...
Yes, there is, and, uh, last year, there was not a charge for the Friday, so I mean, obviously, it wasn't done, so there was no charge, uh, but actually, that, that is the cost.
Three sixty-two.
Correct, to empty the trash bins the morning of the event, which would be three hundred and sixty-two dollars estimated.
Um, would it be possible to look at trying to get a volunteer crew to set that, to do that particular action, because three hundred and sixty-two dollars is a lot for our event, um, but still go through with the rest of everything else tonight?
Have volunteers clean out those...
Those bins, because our volunteers will be cleaning out bins the rest of the day, and I know that Sherry's assembling an early morning crew.
Right.
Um, but that would save us quite a bit of money for...
So, what you'd be requesting, if I may through the chair?
Please.
Um, what you're requesting is for DPW to remove that line item, and the event itself with volunteers will clean out all of those bins?
Yes.
Okay.
Does DPW have an issue with doing that?
No, we do not.
Okay, sounds like a good...
Point of clarification, though, does that include there was also a request for a dumpster, because they didn't have enough trash from...
We still, we still will need the dumpster. Absolutely.
Okay, so we could remove that, and that is how much again, I'm sorry?
Three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Okay. Okay.
So, that would help us a lot. Um, the only other thing that we request is that, um, the police and fire try to use auxiliary officers as often as possible, um, we set up a new security team, um, it's led by Amanda Vicker, who drove in today to be with us, and I really thank her for holding on for one of the longest council meetings I've ever been to, um, but she'd like to meet the police chief just in person and reintroduce herself, um, she comes from New Baltimore Police, um, as a volunteer to us.
So, chief, sometimes we've used auxiliary in the past, and that helps lower costs, sometimes we haven't, I don't know, help, just sort of speak to the issue of auxiliary, um, officers and when they're used, and if they can be used, and...
Certainly, Your Honor, we generally use, um, auxiliaries for crowd control, for eyes and ears, um, alcohol-related events, we, uh, mandate that we have sworn officers there, uh, they're in pairs of two, and there's three pairs, and that's how we have staffed this, uh, for the last several years, including when it was Motor City Pride, uh, we have not made any of those changes. We don't discourage, uh, the auxiliaries from assisting us at Pride, but because we have the Rainbow Run earlier in that day, we'll be using just about all of the resources of the auxiliary for that event, so whether or not they want to stay over for, uh, Pride or part of Pride, um, that's kind of up to them, they are volunteers, we really can't mandate their, their service, but...
Sure.
But we do use them for, um, you know, many, many, many of the events, but not for...
But am I hearing you correct, in the past, when we've used the auxiliary at Pride, it's been supplemental to the sworn officers, not in replacement of?
They are, they're there for presence, for, you know, uniform presence, for assistance, for directions, to, to advise us, we've, but they have in, in years past at this event, not Ferndale Pride, but Motor City Pride, they ha, they've actually engaged, they, a couple of them got into a fight, uh, with a, with a drunk that the officers had to go and, and get involved, I believe Sergeant Brown got bit, uh, in the arm on that particular occasion, uh, so, yeah, they have, they do assist us at Pride, but we need them for the Rainbow Run, we absolutely need them, uh, to, for traffic control, they're well-suited for that, uh, event, and that's why, and that's why they're there.
Yes.
Uh, this type of event, uh, we mandate that we have sworn, but they certainly can be supplemented, uh, as an addition with, uh, with the auxiliaries at, uh, that Pride event.
Julia, any other, other thoughts or questions?
I just want, want to remind everyone that we are a different event from Motor City Pride.
Very much, you have not had any incidences that's been...
We have had, we, well, we passed out one Band-Aid once, we had somebody get a little cut on their finger, um, but other than that, we've had no incidents at Pride, um, we do have a lot of volunteers who come out, our security, um, is very friendly, and kind of keeps the crowd very calm, um, it's definitely a family event with no alcohol in the streets, um, which brings the calmness level down, it's, it's definitely a, a celebration in Ferndale of everything that is Ferndale.
Till Dan Martin gets there, and then...
Hey, hey.
So, okay, so if, the removal of that line item really does help us a lot.
Apparently, I'm going to be picking up trash in the morning, I don't know what you're talking about.
I know. Take out volunteer, thank you. Okay, good, thank you. So, a motion would be in order.
I would move to approve the special event for permit for Ferndale Pride twenty fourteen on Saturday, May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, from twelve noon to eleven PM, as presented by the special event summary to reflect the consensus of the special event committee, and as amended by the fees discussed this evening.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon, is there further discussion?
I just want to thank Julia, and I've had the opportunity to work with that co-chair committee, which, which Councilman Pollock is a part of, and they've just done a tremendous job this year, this is going to be a fantastic event, the volunteer, uh, work that everybody's done in Pitched End, it's just, it gets more impressive every year, and there's an absolutely great crew working on it, so, um, I'm glad we could talk about the fees, but you, we're going to have a really good event this year, and I thank you and all your volunteers for putting it together.
Here, here, and I look forward to doing the commitment ceremonies, and I look forward in the future to doing them as marriages, too, so, look forward to participating. Uh, Sherlyn, do you want to call the roll, please?
Council members Pollocka?
Abstain.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you very much, um...
Mayor, if I may, if I may explain my abstain...
Give you that opportunity?
Um, I'm in a situation, I'm in an awkward situation, in that I am the treasurer for the Ferndale Community Foundation, which is the organization that puts on Ferndale Pride, um, my responsibilities to the foundation is to keep the costs as low as possible, to raise as much money as we can, but my responsibilities as councilman is to make sure that the city incurs no costs, um, and that I support, um, the people and the city of Ferndale, so I'm kind of caught in a situation where I'd love for the city to pick up a lot of the stuff for the foundation, but I, I, I can't, I, you know, I, I can't go against my responsibilities for the city, so I felt it was best that I abstained my vote.
Appreciate the explanation, yes.
Got a bundle of conflict there.
We're conflicted, I mean...
Huh? No? We'll call. Oh, wait, did we call, did we vote?
Yeah, I abstained.
Sorry, sorry, we already voted.
We have voted, it's over, thank you. Um, all right, our next item of business, and our last item of business is a call to council. Chief, you've taken a number of trips up the aisle, but do you have anything else for the city tonight?
Two very short things, Your Honor, we had, uh, the, um, the drug drop-off over the weekend, and we were successful, we had nearly twenty pounds of pharmaceuticals that citizens of the city dropped off and will be properly destroyed, uh, we did that free of charge to the public, uh, basically through our DEA officer. The second thing is, is that in a non-police-related matter, on, um, the tenth of May, there will be an event at Ferndale High School, both a art fair and a, uh, alumni baseball game, uh, for the, for Ferndale High School alumni, and at the same time, there will be a Dodge Drive event, so if you can come and drive a car, basically around the school, you will raise money for the football program, the soccer program, the baseball program, and the softball program. It is like five minutes out of your day, uh, and it helps out all...
What's the date again?
It's the tenth of May, uh, but there's a lot of things going on at the high school, should be a lot of folks up there, there's a, there's a soccer alumni game, a baseball alumni game, and the, and the art fair, so, anybody that can attend would be, uh, well-appreciated for, uh, those four boosters clubs, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, chief. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a quick follow-up to our employer-sponsored health and wellness clinic, um, we are still working to finalize our agreement with care here, however, we most recently received notification that Hazel Park has no longer decided to continue to participate with our endeavor, and so we will be bringing back to an updated agreement, interlocal agreement, that will be between the city of Ferndale, Madison Heights, and Royal Oak, as we move forward with additionally some updated, um, financials as well.
Thank you.
Um, we anticipate that to only affect the fixed costs and that, so...
Any further discussion with Oak Park, which had, had expressed some interest in it as well?
I believe Cornerstone is still in communication with them, we have a couple communities that are hanging out there that want to see how the first and second years go, um, before they jump in, and so, we're working on that.
Good, thank you. Derek, anything else from economic development?
Nothing.
Thank you. Joe, anything from parks and recreation? Yes, it's spring, I'm guessing there's lots of stuff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a couple, um, announcements, um, we still are registering for our youth baseball leagues that will begin in a couple weeks, we have, um, some spaces available, so you can either contact our office at two four eight five four four six seven six seven, um, or visit our website to register, ferndalerecreation.org. Um, we're also gearing up for our adults, adult softball leagues that will begin next week, while we're not taking any more team registrations, um, we do occasionally have teams that are looking for players, um, so if you're interested in joining a team, we do a free agent form that folks can fill out on ferndalemi.gov, um, and lastly, if you're looking for, somewhere to hold during, um, summer graduation or family reunion, we are accepting, um, pavilion rental at this time, um, and those spaces are filling up quickly, um, rental applications can be found on ferndalemi.gov as well.
Excellent, thank you. Mayor Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department? All right, Mr. Larry, anything from special events, and, at all, you do more than special events these days?
Well, I just want to say that for next Saturday, May third, uh, the alley behind the Rust Belt Market, they'll be having a food truck rally from noon to ten PM, and then we have Clean the Ferndale Up, and we are seeking volunteers, they can go online now that we have a website specifically for the event called cleantheferndaleup.com, so, volunteer, we'd love to have you, it's from eight AM here, it's starting at City Hall, and, uh, the volunteer activities will be from nine to noon.
And there's more Ferndale gear for, for sale, eh? Didn't, aren't there new items for sale at the Ferndale F...
Yes, and I forgot to wear my jacket down here today, I'm so sorry, but we do now have wind jackets and, and spring, uh, hoodies with zippers in the front, and they do have the new fabulous Ferndale logo, yes, thank you very much.
Anything else from DPW this evening?
Nothing else this evening.
Thanks for joining us. Joe, anything from the innovation world?
Nothing.
All right, um, Sherlyn, anything from the clerk's office?
Yeah.
Go ahead, I asked him.
Um, yes, I'm just going to pass along some information from the Oakland County Animal Control Division, um, as they did last year, they will be conducting an animal or dog census again this year, starting June second, I believe, they will be going door to door in various Oakland County cities, including Ferndale, checking to make sure that your dogs are properly licensed, um, the date that they start the census is after the date to get your license at the regular rate, after June first, all dog licenses are thirty dollars apiece, plus whatever fines Oakland County may give you if your dogs are not properly licensed, so we will be promoting this on the website, through social media, I'll, um, keep talking about it here, we're going to try to get it on the next water bills that go out, just to remind people that dogs do need to be licensed in the city of Ferndale, thank you.
Thank you very much. City manager, anything from your office this evening? All right, Dan, anything for the legal world? Nothing. Uh, Mayor Procham Martin?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Lennon?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing tonight. Uh, Councilman Pollocka?
Uh, two things, uh, I'm going to reiterate the Clean the Ferndale Up, uh, again, Ferndale Community Foundation events, uh, we could use some sponsors, uh, sponsorship can be as low as twenty-five dollars or as high as three hundred dollars, and it does cost a little bit of money to clean the Ferndale up, uh, again, you can find more information at the website, www.cleentheferndaleup.com, and second, which I'm really surprised, Ann Heller is not here.
Thank you.
Is May eighth...
Eighth.
Um, is Ferndare Dinner, uh, at the Warren Ukrainian Cultural Center, always good food, and, uh, I think you are going to be the MC?
I am, that's correct.
Yeah, so I'll let you continue further.
You, you hit it, May eighth, come out and support Ferndare.
You gonna bust a move?
Yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Piana?
Uh, one thing, um, I had the opportunity to represent the city of Ferndale at the